Welcome to Invested in Climate. Protecting the planet and decarbonizing the global economy is the challenge of our time. We all have a role to play and the opportunity we face is unprecedented. Invested in Climate aims to help people do more to address climate change through their work, investments, lifestyle, and activism. I'm your host, Jason Rissman. I support a growing community of top climates and ESG leaders as the Chief Experience Officer at Nations Wealth, and I'm an advisor to the Climate Practice at IDEO. I'm also an investor and startup advisor, and when it comes to climate action, I know I'll be a lifelong learner, always looking to have more impact. If you like what you hear, give us a good rating on Apple, Spotify, or wherever you found us. Sign up for updates and suggest ideas for future episodes at investedincclimate.com. Follow us on social, subscribe, and spread the word. Thanks for joining.
I just feel like we are in this moment where every part of the next steps on addressing climate change, especially in the city of Los Angeles, are going to require real work. It's not going to be easy. It's going to require behavioral change.
Hi, everyone. When it comes to climate policy, we hear a whole lot about what's happening or not at the federal level, and it's easy to miss the critical role of states and cities in responding to climate change. Whether you know it or not, your local government is shaping how your community is preparing for and responding to climate impacts, and it's also making choices driven by the climate transition that affect your daily life. Building codes, electric vehicle infrastructure, public transportation, waste management, green spaces, maybe these things don't sound sexy, but they're central to cutting emissions and creating more resilient, livable communities. Today's episode focuses on cities, and we're joined by two city council members who are leading the climate efforts of two major US cities. Yasemin Ansari is Vice Mayor and Council Member of Phoenix, Arizona, and Nithya Ramon is a City Council Member of Los Angeles. Both Councilmember Ansari and Ramon care deeply about climate action, and in this conversation, we discussed how they're setting their priorities, the progress they've made, their goals for the future, and much more. I learned a lot from this conversation and suspect you will as well. Here we go. Councilmember Ramon and Councilmember Ansari, welcome to Invested in Climate. So delighted to have you both on the show.
Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you.
Where do I find you both today? Are you both in your respective jurisdictions and cities?
Yeah, I am in my office. I just got back from visiting a new training center where folks who want to get into the culinary industry and work at our airports and hotels are training, and I believe it's actually their second one after Los Angeles. So a nice little connection there.
Oh, that's great. And I am right now in my home. I just got home from the office after watching some of our budget hearings for our city council budget process, which are happening right now.
Well, thank you both so much for carving out time amidst busy workdays to have this conversation. We're here today to discuss the importance of local climate policy, and I'm really excited to learn from both of you who are champions and working to make your cities more sustainable. Before we dig in, let's just start with introductions. Councilmember Ansari, would you please kick us off and just tell us a bit about your background, the city that you're serving, and what personally inspired you to focus on climate?
Absolutely. Well, thank you again for having me. My name is Yasemin Ansari. I'm serving as the Vice Mayor of Phoenix, Arizona. I am an Arizona native, the daughter of two Iranian immigrants, and have actually spent my entire professional career working on climate issues. I sort of fell into it accidentally after undergrad when I was studying international relations and really had a focus on the Middle East and refugee issues. I ended up through a public service fellowship landing at the United Nations. Fresh out of college, I worked on former UN Secretary General Ban Ki-moon's climate action team starting in 2014 and got to be part of this amazing 20-person team of individuals from all around the world who are helping to advise and do the political work to help make the Paris Climate Agreement happen a year and a half after that in 2015. And I have always been extremely passionate about this issue after really kind of realizing how all encompassing the climate crisis was, whether you are somebody who cares about public health issues, national security, economic issues, climate is at the forefront of all of that. And so I later went on to help run several global climate action summits, but it was really in 2017, 18 that I started thinking about running for office and realized the importance of local representation. At that time, we were in the middle of the Trump administration. We had pulled out as a country of the Paris Agreement, which was devastating, and I was at the time working with former Governor Brown's team, focused on non-state climate action, so working with cities, working with states, working with companies from around the US and around the world on pushing them to strengthen their climate commitments in the absence of federal leadership. So I started looking back at my own hometown and finding articles that called Phoenix the least sustainable city in the country, which was pretty alarming, given that it is also the fastest warming city. I really saw the importance of having local champions who understood the urgency of the climate crisis, but also had experience working on the issue. So that's how I ended up back here in Phoenix, running for the Phoenix City Council. I was elected in 2020 and have made climate my signature issue, so I helped pass the first ever Phoenix Climate Action Plan. I have led all of the city's work on transportation electrification and also helped establish the country's first publicly funded Office of Heat Response and Mitigation. So for me, there's no question, this is the most pressing issue of our time, and it's really inspiring and encouraging just to see that that movement has really grown around the country. Like I was saying before this conversation, Councilwoman Ramon has been a role model for me personally before, I think you must have ran right before me if I recall, because I have followed your work, but there's so many people like us out there now who are climate champions at the local state level, which is really exciting and encouraging. So thank you again.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Ansari. There's so much that you mentioned that we're going to want to circle back to, but first, Councilmember Ramon, would love to hear your story as well.
Well, thank you again, and my name is Nithya Ramon, and I'm the Councilmember for the 4th District here in the city of Los Angeles, which has 260,000 constituents and the neighborhood stretch from northern Silver Lake to Reseda, going through the Hollywood Hills, if you know anything about Los Angeles geography. And I really wanted to do this work. I'm trained as an urban planner. I've done a lot of work on urban poverty issues, but for me, the city of Los Angeles is a very unique governance system. City council members have an incredible amount of power. The city has a lot of tools in its toolbox to address some of the biggest challenges that are facing it. To me, these are really our housing and homelessness crisis and our climate issues. These tools, I thought, were really underutilized by our city council over the past few decades, I would argue. A lot of people come into these roles without a clear sense, I think, of what is possible if the city really takes significant action. And I really wanted to talk about that. That's part of why I ran for office. I love cities. I wanted to talk about cities. So I ended up running for office on a platform of change, of thinking about how we can utilize the city as a means to bolster action on the issues that matter most to us, and that's exactly what we've done. Since I've been here, I've done a couple of different things that I think are really exciting. Most importantly, we passed an ordinance that went into effect on April 1st, which requires that all new construction, both residential and commercial, in the city of Los Angeles is carbon-free. So basically, it means all-electric, which brings up a whole other set of issues of how do you make sure we have the electric capacity, or how do we make sure that we have the generation capacity? How do we make sure that we're resilient even as we're making this transition? But we're one of the biggest cities to do this. We're one of the biggest cities to actually implement this legislation, and I think it can be the way forward for many other cities in terms of taking big climate action.
That's great. Thank you, Councilmember Ramon. Both of you, it's very clear, have strong track records for climate action, and I'd love to just start by offering listeners a high-level understanding of what happens at the city level, what's really possible, and what can cities do? And amongst all of the opportunities you have to move the needle on climate, how do you establish your priorities? Councilmember Ansari, would you like to start?
I think cities have a huge amount of power and an incredible role to play in combating climate change. As Councilwoman Ramon said, I think, first of all, at the city level, you're closest to the people, so you can work hand-in-hand with your constituents to bring about policy changes, and you're also at the forefront of how your city develops, how you build. Phoenix, we always like to tout our fifth-largest city after Los Angeles, and we're the fastest-growing city in the country, and we're a very young city. And so as councilmembers, we have an incredible amount of sway and jurisdiction over how the city continues to grow, and we need to make sure that that is done in a sustainable way. Right now, I am very focused at the city level on transportation electrification because, unfortunately, in Phoenix, we have heavy car culture. More than 50% of our greenhouse gas emissions is a result of the transportation sector, and so we are investing in building out our public transportation system. We are building light rail. Currently, I'm extending light rail in my district on the south side of South Phoenix, and then later in West Phoenix. We have ordered our first electric buses and now finally have a transition plan to completely phase out any carbon-powered buses by 2040, and we're installing public charging infrastructure across the city. And that's something that we have been able to do, even though in Arizona, unfortunately, we have some pretty prohibitive state laws that preempt us from doing as much as I would like to do, especially on anything that is a mandate. We are very limited in that regard, but we have been able to be creative and work around that and think big in that regard. I think on the heat front, we're also trying to make a lot of progress. Again, fastest heating city, hottest city in the US and even the Western Hemisphere as we are building new buildings, new housing infrastructure, et cetera. We're doing everything we can to combat our urban heat island effect to the extent possible. We have pretty ambitious Tree and Shade goals at the city and several positions dedicated now to make sure that those goals are implemented. So I think there's a lot that, there's still so much more, I'll be the first to say it, that Phoenix needs to do, and I wish we had a little bit more power in regards to mandating certain things, but you also do have the ability to work with constituents, work with stakeholders, and we're also going through our budget process. And over the past few years, we've made significant investments in climate, which I'm really, really excited about.
Great. Thank you so much. Councilmember Ramon, what about you? How do you see the role of cities and how do you prioritize?
Here in the city of Los Angeles, we have, like I said, some unique tools, and I think broadly speaking, my philosophy on the role of cities really comes from my experience watching Trump undo some of the great climate legislation of years past and thinking to myself, we need to have a more robust system here in America for preserving our climate gains, especially at a time when I feel like so many Americans really put this kind of climate action at the top of their list in terms of what we should be doing as a country. For me, making sure that we're utilizing the tools of the city to do that is central to how we think about climate action in the country overall. The interesting thing about operating in the city of Los Angeles is that Los Angeles has some pretty unique tools. For example, we have our own municipal utility. It's the largest municipal utility in America, the Department of Water and Power. We are able to set ambitious goals in terms of moving away from natural gas, moving away from emissions-producing sources that I think other cities don't necessarily have the capacity to do. And I think for me, it's really exciting to be in this role, in this place, and think about what kind of rules, what kind of legislation we can put into place to make sure that that really happens over the long term. There's another issue that I think is really important is that we also have a port here. It's a major port. In fact, the Long Beach, Los Angeles Port Complex together is one of the most important economic drivers in the region, brings so much into the country, especially during COVID, expanded its activities, and it is the largest source of pollution in the region. Again, we have port commissioners that are appointed by the mayor. It is nominally under the control of the city. How do we ensure that we're using all of these tools to move us towards our climate goals, even in a regulatory environment where many of the parts, the pollution-producing parts of those assets are actually controlled through federal legislation? So we have airports here. The FAA controls a lot about airline emissions. Ships are controlled outside of the city, but what can we do at the city level to really think about moving towards our climate goals? And that's really the kind of thinking that I want to be doing here.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Ansari, you don't have ports, and I don't think that Phoenix has its own utility like LA, but like you said, one thing that's unique about Phoenix is you are the fastest-warming city in the United States and in the Western Hemisphere. And as you mentioned, you're the first city that's developed a publicly-funded Office of Heat Response and Mitigation. Tell us about that.
It is a rapidly growing team at the city. I would say, right now, the crises that we're facing here, heat is absolutely one of them. It's already feeling like summer, and we're expecting our first triple-digit days very soon, and we're also dealing with a significant housing and homelessness population. So as Phoenix has grown, we also have not been able to, as a city but also as a state, keep up with the need for more housing, and that's not just affordable housing. It absolutely includes affordable housing, but it's just housing overall. We have a significant shortage. Our unsheltered population has grown, and with that, our heat deaths have grown every single summer. So with that recognition and within that context, we established this office with the purpose of really having this team that is hyper-focused on not only developing solutions that are for the short term to save lives during our peak summer months, but also long-term solutions to make sure the city can sustain itself for years to come. What I have been really proud of with the work that the new office has done is, they've established cooling centers across the city during the summer months. We have done a much better job than we ever have in our main area outside of our shelter downtown, which is called the Zone. It's gotten a lot of national attention lately because there's about 1,000 people living outside in tents, and unfortunately, we've seen several hundred deaths every single year directly as a result of heat. Over the past couple of years, I've worked directly with them to make sure that we have several sites right nearby for cold water, for shade. Right now, they are also working hand-in-hand with our housing team to build new shelters across the city, and we're trying to get folks off the streets and into housing. I would say that has taken up a bulk of the work, is just preparing each year for the summer and making sure that process is more effective, and we can try to eventually see a downward trend in heat deaths. They are also very focused on our Tree and Shade Master Plan for the city, so we have several tree program managers now who are working on implementation. The cities receive millions of dollars from private sector partners around planting trees across the city, and much of that actually happens in my district. I serve Southwest Phoenix, and so it's downtown all the way to 107th Avenue, you know, Maryvale, South Phoenix, and areas of the city that are hotter and have worse air pollution. So really proud of the work, and I hope to see the office continue to grow, because I mean, it's obviously not an issue that's going away for Phoenix.
No, unfortunately, it won't go away, and Phoenix will only be getting hotter. But thank you, Councilmember Ansari. Clearly, your statements underscore how climate impacts are already very much being felt and actually costing lives, and how climate impacts are also disproportionately felt by marginalized communities and people with less income. This, of course, points to how climate change really is an issue of equity. And Councilmember Ramon, I know that's something that's very important to you and has been part of your work, and so I'd be curious to hear, how has equity and climate justice been central to LA's focus on climate change?
Well, LA has centered equity in a number of ways. One of the ways in which I think we need to think about it the most is exactly what Councilmember Ansari was saying, which is that the people who are facing the worst impacts of climate change are often those with the least resources and the least capacity to be able to absorb the additional costs that come from dealing with climate change or responding to climate change in some way. I think for us as a city, we have taken this into account in a number of different programs, but we still need to do better. That's the thing that I think I want to really be upfront about here. We talk about climate justice. We talk about the differential impacts of these issues. We're not moving fast enough to address those shortfalls. Housing is one of those issues where we have a city where land use and housing underlies every aspect of injustice in the city. Rules around land use prevent construction in wealthier neighborhoods because of restrictive zoning laws, and they have resulted in some of the most expensive housing costs in the entire country. They've resulted in significant overcrowding in certain neighborhoods. They've also resulted in people being pushed out of the central city areas where you have the greatest access to things like public transit, shade, city resources, and into surrounding areas where it is significantly hotter, where the air quality is worse, and where you're driving or taking public transit very, very long distances to be able to come to work. And so to me, in thinking through the inequitable impacts of climate change, I keep coming back to the issue of land use and how we think about our land use and zoning policies as a tool to achieve greater equity, and how we link that to our efforts to really undo climate injustice. That's the thing that I've been thinking the most about, especially as we go through our rezoning process through what's called the housing element here in LA, where we're actually changing our zoning program for the entire city through state mandates. This is the issue that I think underscores my work and my intervention in it.
Let's go deeper into that for a moment, and you mentioned before that LA has implemented a zero-emission policy for new construction, and this is really something that's a major achievement under your leadership. And recently, banning gas stoves has become controversial and even something that courts have been weighing in on, recently overturning a gas stove ban here in the Bay Area. So tell us more about what you've been able to accomplish on this front in LA, and what have you learned that can help others working to decarbonize the built environment?
As I mentioned earlier, we passed an ordinance, which is now, as of April 1st of this year, is in place. It effectively bans new gas pipelines coming into new construction, because what we're asking is that all residential and commercial construction that's new is carbon-free. But it is not, like Berkeley, it is not a ban on the actual piping. It is simply a requirement that new construction be carbon-free. I think what is exciting about this moment is that it took a lot of work to get there. I was in office for over a year before we introduced the legislation, and the reason it took a long time to introduce a fairly straightforward piece of legislation is because we were doing the work with our labor partners. We were doing the work with our other council office partners. We were doing the work with our mayor to ensure that everyone was on the same page about what the legislation needed to look like. There are certain key exemptions, which I think are very useful. For example, the legislation right now exempts new commercial kitchens from having to be carbon-free. So that means a new restaurant can still have a gas line coming into it, and that has been a traditional source of opposition for some of this legislation in other places. So I think being smart about, thinking about who your allies are going to be, where you're going to see the challenges, and strategizing around them or with them ideally, is really the way that you can get to your goals. The harder challenge is ahead, though, which is decarbonizing our existing building stock. How do you do that in a city like Los Angeles, where 60-plus percent of the population lives in multifamily units, where poverty is very, very high, where housing stock is old, where families do not have the capacity in this intense housing shortage to be able to absorb costs for retrofitting old buildings to become carbon-neutral into their, they can't absorb that into their rent costs. So how we go about the next step, I think, is going to be so much more challenging and really has to center equity, because we cannot put this on the backs of already overburdened renters in the city. We just cannot do that to our residents. And so this next step in climate action, which is absolutely necessary, which I think a lot of other cities are thinking about and trying to grapple with, will require significant work, significant coalition building, and significant fiscal resources to be able to support us as we make this transition.
Many people saw the headlines about the court overturning the ruling here in Berkeley. Can you give us a sense, is that affecting momentum nationally? There's dozens of cities that are working on trying to decarbonize buildings through policies like this, and at the same time, there's states that have preempted rules, the banning of gas appliances.
Well, I think of this in the context of how we do our building and zoning codes. A lot of our work around building affordable housing in recent years has not worked because we have mandated certain actions. It has worked because we have incentivized certain actions, right? So Los Angeles needs to build a lot more affordable housing, but in recent years has been building more than it has before, and the way it has done that is in two ways. One, it has a fairly robust accessory dwelling unit program. That's a, some people call it a grandma unit, or basically another unit in your backyard. We've made it easy to get those permits. We have funding potentially for people who want to build it. So we've made it really easy to build those ADUs, right? And we've made it sometimes good for you to build those ADUs, because you get some money from the government to do that. We've also done density bonus programs. We have something called the Transit Oriented Communities Initiative at the city level. We have density bonus programs at the state level, and because of these additional incentives, we're getting thousands of new affordable housing units without a single public dollar being invested in it, and it has been, relative to Los Angeles's history, very successful. We still need to do better. We need to do more. But to me, that is a very, very easy pathway forward. What if, for example, in a city that wanted to incentivize this, you said any new piece of construction gets to the front of the line in terms of building permits, has exemptions from certain kinds of costs? If they make these kinds of commitments, I would imagine that the market would respond very, very favorably to that kind of policymaking.
Thank you. Councilmember Ansari, what about for Phoenix? Are you looking for the same sort of balance between new rules and new incentives? And how is that playing out for you?
Again, like within the context of Arizona, purple state that historically has been red, I think, is always a balancing act to ensure the balance between passing these bold progressive policies, but also trying to work with various stakeholders largely, which are oftentimes have been the business community. And so we try to, you know, again, we're not really able to ban things or require things in that way. I've been very focused on just trying to incentivize better behavior. On housing has been at the forefront recently, and we're quite behind, but I've been leading the charge over the last six months around text amendments in our zoning laws for ADUs and duplexes and triplexes to make that easier, and we'll hopefully be passing those changes this September of this calendar year. In this budget cycle, I'm pushing for a $3 million allocation to be able to eliminate any permitting fees for folks who want to build affordable housing projects and also want to streamline that process so that they are to the front of the line, just to expedite the ability to build more affordable housing in our city. We also have an interesting situation right now on the housing front with the state legislature. It's become actually a bipartisan issue because everyone recognizes the need to build more housing, and so there is a fear for cities that we may actually completely lose our power over zoning. I do think that has lit a fire under the city to be able to build more housing, and I will say, Phoenix, compared to many of our surrounding cities, like we are always building, but of course, there are processes that make it take quite a while. I think for me, also very focused on just changing the culture around issues like transportation. You know, we've invested quite a bit in biking infrastructure. I was proud to bring the first two-way protected bike lane in the city in my district and building a lot more of that, and thanks to the bipartisan infrastructure bill, we're working to bring as much money back to Phoenix on sustainability issues. One of the exciting things that happened last year was Secretary Buttigieg coming to town to help award $25 million for a bike and pedestrian bridge that will connect downtown Phoenix with South Phoenix and will be built over the next couple of years. So there's a lot happening, but we are just, I think, from a policy perspective, want to, have been always trying to bring people to the table in a way where these policies seem less scary for folks and more an opportunity to build a better city.
Looking forward for the rest of the year or even the next couple of years, what for your cities do you think are the biggest priorities? What are some areas where you hope your cities can make much more progress? And Councilmember Ramon, you mentioned the embedded carbon in buildings that are already standing, but what else is on your minds? What are some opportunities and priorities for you?
I do think that transportation is also a big focus for us here in LA. Transportation and housing, for me, are the two big climate levers that I'd like to push a lot more. For me, on the housing front, again, I think we need to build more housing. We need to build more affordable housing, and we need to be doing it in places where people are not reliant on cars to get from that housing to their place of work, and that is something that the city is really going to have to grapple with as we move forward. To me, that kind of action is very, very important housing action. The other piece is really building out, exactly as Councilmember Ansari was mentioning, in Phoenix, trying to build out transportation infrastructure that can help get people safely out of their cars. One thing I'm very excited about is the representative from the only bridge district between the San Fernando Valley and the basin, and I really want to make sure that we have protected pathways to use a bicycle to get from the valley into the center of the city, because I think if we can do that, which we don't Because I think if we can do that, which we don't have right now, and it can be a protected pathway that's really unbroken, that is a network that's not in and out, what we can do is really transform the way in which people think about commuting in Los Angeles. And that, to me, is a really powerful vision for change that I think could also galvanize community support. Because what is the biggest obstacle to doing any of this work? It's opposition from neighborhoods that say, I don't want more housing and I don't want to slow down my car ride, which are both completely understandable. You love your neighborhood and it's awful to be stuck in traffic. But we can overcome those issues if we really present people with a vision of what that change can be like, that they can all rally around.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Ansari, what about for you? Looking ahead to the future, what are some of the most important priorities for Phoenix?
There are so many, but over the next year, if I was to make it more short term, I would say zoning reform is the biggest right now. So the ADU piece is the one I'm pushing. And then also I am working on another text amendment that would eliminate parking minimums for new construction projects along our light rail system. So again, going back to trying to encourage less car usage, more micro mobility in the city, both housing and heat related. We have a goal as a city to add 800 new shelter beds this year, at least 280 of them I'm working on in my district. And then third, I think just more implementation on our transportation electrification plan. That was a policy I passed a year and a half ago, specifically wanting to increase the number of public charging stations that we have around the city. So we have a goal of 500 by 2030, especially in lower income neighborhoods, communities of color, et cetera. We are installing charging stations at public libraries, at our parks, at any city-owned facilities. And we also have a goal, and actually I'll be going after this, we're doing workshops in communities and we're hoping to do a pilot program around like an electric car sharing program. So working on that right now, I just really want to show as much progress as possible over the next year or two to show like what the future of Phoenix can really look like if we truly were a sustainable city.
Let's switch gears for a moment and talk about private-public partnerships. And the private sector, of course, plays a critical role in addressing climate change. And both LA and Phoenix have incredible bases of companies and are innovation hubs in their own ways. And I think of the LA Clean Tech Incubator in LA as being a great source of innovation. And I was actually in Phoenix recently for the Green Business Conference. And also know that Arizona State University is in Phoenix where there's a lot of innovation related to climate. Curious, at the city level, how do you think about partnering with companies and the private sector?
One of the ways in which we, I think about how we partner with the private sector is in thinking through some of the regulation that we're doing at our South Coast Air Quality Management District. I serve on this regional body. I was appointed by the previous mayor, which basically regulates air quality in this area. It's not just the city of Los Angeles, but the region. And I'm one of X number of board members drawn from all of these different areas. What we're doing at South Coast AQMD is really thinking about what can we do either through regulation or through MOUs or incentives to really push the private sector in areas like the port and our warehouse and shipping network here to reduce emissions. And that is, I think, an ongoing process of learning. We're now working with the ports to try and think about how can cleaner trucks be at the ports? I think for me, it's really important to know what is the capacity of the trucking industry to be able to produce this kind of trucks? How many trucks will be produced on an annual basis? Are we making regulation that is absolutely impossible for the sector to even achieve? Or are we setting goals that then the private sector will be able to match? So to me, that's the dance that we're doing with private sector there is really to think about, okay, if we want clean trucks, how many clean trucks can we even manufacture?
Thank you. Councilmember Ansari.
So there's a couple of examples that I can point to recently. Here in Phoenix, we absolutely love to work and bring private sector partners on board. One cool initiative that we did recently, so one of the challenges that we have is around public water access. And I'm trying to make sure that we have access to cold drinking water anywhere in our city, whether it's at our parks or for unsheltered population. So we partnered with a group called Venture Cafe and they bring together startups and innovators almost on a weekly basis. And we did an innovation challenge with them. We brought together some really cool folks from AFU, Smart Minds, young startups and presented them with this challenge of, hey, like what could better access to cold drinking water look like in a city like Phoenix that deals with such extreme heat? And then they spent the entire day working together and it was essentially a hackathon for this innovation challenge. And that is still ongoing and we hope to have the results from that very soon. So that's kind of a more fun one. And then when it comes to the transportation work I've been doing, we had the housing industry quite involved in this committee that worked together for a year before we were able to pass our plan. And one thing I noticed, you know, as we were bringing folks around the table, I initially felt some hesitation, especially from multifamily housing developers around EV charging infrastructure. Their concerns were about not really understanding where this was headed, how quickly we were moving towards an electric future. And so a lot of kind of back and forth around, well, you know, we don't want to spend all this money now to have all this charging infrastructure and it's just going to sit there empty and we don't know what's needed. And so we're like, okay, look, like I'm obviously not the expert, so let us bring together auto manufacturers from some of the largest companies like Ford and GM. And why don't you all just talk together so they can talk to you about the investments they're making and the trends and where things are going. And so we did a couple of these roundtables and I felt they were very effective because again, you're putting the right people together. They're hearing directly from these big companies to say that, yeah, we're actually investing more in EVs than we are in our fossil fuel powered vehicles now. And here's the investments that are going into that. Here's our phase out dates. And that was very compelling to some of the largest apartment builders in the city of Phoenix. And I think has spurred them to think much differently about the issue. So just small examples, but that is the kind of work that I find to be really effective, just bringing people together for those kinds of conversations.
That's great. We've been speaking mostly about the on-the-ground, real-world impact that cities have on climate through their policies and their incentives. But cities also can have a big impact on the narratives and by influencing each other and influencing other parts of governments. And so I'm curious how you see the role of your city or experiences you've had where cities and your city is really influencing the broader climate fights and other governments and other cities around the world.
I think it plays a huge role. I decided to run for office because I saw the role that cities have and saw the amazing work that cities could do. I think there's a lot of amazing platforms now where local leaders can get together and places like the UN Climate Conference that happens every single year now are very well attended by mayors and council members and state representatives from across the country and across the world. And you can learn quite a bit. Like I said, I think LA and Phoenix have very different structures because we have a weak mayor system and a strong city manager form of government. But still, I think there's like a ton of cool things at Los Angeles. And Denver is another one that I think has done really cool work that I like to take lessons from. But that's honestly one of my favorite things to do as a council member is to kind of just look to cool innovative policies that other cities have passed or just things that they're doing and learn from that.
Councilmember Rahman.
I just feel like we are in this moment where every part of the next steps on addressing climate change, especially in the city of Los Angeles, are going to require real work. It's not going to be easy. It's going to require behavioral change. It's going to make us change from using a car to getting on a bicycle or walking. It's going to require us to change our appliances, to change the way we cook, to change the way in which we think about how we live in our city and how we interact with the space around it, to change how we think about neighborhoods and what it means to have a neighborhood that you feel strongly about and how it looks and feels to you is hard. These are all really challenging things that cities have to do and residents of cities have to do in order to be able to address climate change in a proactive way. But the thing that's been really exciting for me in doing this work and doing this role and why I think it's really important to be doing it in a city like Los Angeles is to see how excited people get about doing something or taking an action or supporting something that can impact climate change, where they can draw that line and understand why these changes need to happen, why they need to be doing that work. I think about, for example, our new state composting law, which mandates that every city has to take all of their organics out of the waste stream. That's both a landfill space issue, but also a methane gas production issue. We have way too many of our emissions coming from our landfills. We need to get organic waste out of there. We need to compost it. We need to bring it back in a different way. And people are so pumped about it. Like if you tell people that you have a composting pail for them and that there's this new composting program, they get really excited. And so I think if you can design programs and design pathways, taking our climate crisis on head-on that feel productive for people, that makes sense for people and where they can make those connections to these broader existential threats that they grapple with on a day-to-day basis, I think it can be a model for how we do this as, not just as a country, but as a world. And so I'm excited for this city to be a laboratory for how we do that.
A perfect segue to a final question around what people can and really should do. And particularly from a climate lens and at a local level, what are the most impactful ways for listeners that care about climate to make a difference?
I would say advocate at the local level. And obviously there's changing your own habits. I hate the idea of putting the burden on the individual since it is such a systemic issue. And we just have to, as policymakers in the private sector, create a better system. But I have been so impressed by how a little bit of organizing and advocacy at the city level can make such a big difference when it comes to how budgets are spent. Even over the past couple of years during my time on council, you know, I've watched a group of moms come in and call into budget hearings over and over and over again and successfully secure several million dollars for a new park in their community. I've watched a group of senior citizens who predominantly spoke Spanish come and advocate for better bus route access in their neighborhood near a senior center. And they got it. And we worked with them to get them expanded bus service. Same thing with more shelter beds and money for homelessness. So it really does make a difference, coming to council meetings, speaking at budget hearings, et cetera. And that's what, as an office, we try to push for all the time. We're constantly organizing the community around things that they want to get and working together to make it happen. So I think that is the way any person in an American city can make a huge, huge difference.
Councilmember Rahman, what about you? Any parting advice for listeners who want to make a difference on climate?
I would say find your community. Find the group of people that are going to keep you accountable for your climate goals. I think all of this advocacy, thinking about what your city can do, advocating for it, all of that requires persistence. It requires energy. It requires marathon-level patience and training in order to be able to actually make change that can yield results. And you can't do that alone. To anyone who's listening, who wants to take action on climate, I would really say go find your friends in your neighborhood, in your community that also want to do that so that you can lift each other up and hold each other accountable for making progress.
Thank you. Councilmember Ansari, Councilmember Rahman, thank you so much for the work that you're doing and for your time today.
Thank you again for having us and it was such a pleasure to meet you.
Thanks so much, everyone.
Thanks for joining us for this episode of Invested in Climate. Please remember to rate us on Apple, Spotify, or Google. Find show notes, sign up for updates, get in touch, and visualize your climate action at investedinclimate.com. This podcast is for informational and entertainment purposes only and does not constitute financial, accounting, or legal advice. Thanks again.